Meeting in order, and on April 9th, 2020 business meeting, I'd ask the outstanding county administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
I'm actually sitting down. I'm not outstanding anywhere. A little humor to start. Let's start with our staff support today. County Council Stephen Matcor, clerk to the board Kevin Moss, Commissioner Roll Call, Commissioner Humberson.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that didn't seem to work that well. Anyway, I'm Clackamas County Commission Chair Jim Bernard, and we're holding this meeting virtually. If you joined us on Zoom app for this meeting, and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send in a comment to be read during the citizen communication portion of our meeting over email. Just send it in anytime during the meeting by email at clackco news@clackamas.us. That's clackco news@clackamas.us. And be sure to include your name and area where you live in your email. First up, Gary, what's up first?
Yes, Chair, this is our weekly COVID-19 update. We'll begin with Nancy Bush, the Director of Disaster Management, and the Incident Commander for our Emergency Operations Center. We'll give you an update.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. So as usual, I'm going to start out with our numbers for the day. At the state, we have 1,239 positives. At Clackamas County, we have 103 positives and three deaths and 2,148 negatives. Multnomah County has 200, or I'm sorry, 286 positives, 10 deaths, and 5,487 negatives. Washington County has 295 positives, six deaths, and 3,195 negatives. Hospitalized at this time, we have 324 in the state. And I just want to say what Clackamas County is seeing at this time is about a 3% increase every day, which is good news. That we haven't had an increase that is higher than that, or seen any, you know, larger spikes. We are looking at the Institute of Health metrics, and they're estimating that we are going to see a peak around April 22nd. There is another organization that is doing some estimates, and their estimate is at around May 2nd. But if everything goes as projected, and when we do reach our peak, we have flattened the curve, and there should not be any resources, or hospital resource beds, a shortage there. So that is something, that is good news. We're still planning, just in case. We do see a higher speak than peak than what we're expecting, but that is what we're looking at right now for our projections. I just want to talk a little bit about the EOC structure. We, over the past couple of weeks, I've talked about the expansion of our operations, which we have now done. So we've been, are including behavioral health. We have pulled even the fire agencies, law enforcement, and we're connecting with those two under our operations group. And we do now have someone besides Command that is pulling all of that together. That became too much for Command to do on our own, so we actually have some staff now from DTD, in fact, that are doing that for us. We have the expansion of the liaison group as well. And we have established a chief of that group. The liaison group is going to, is include cities. We're liaising with them. As well as our vulnerable populations groups, migrant workers, LGBTQ, and all of those other groups that we want to make sure that we're connecting with on a regular basis. So the structure has changed a little bit. I just want to remind everyone that as the Emergency Operations Center, we do report to our county administrator Gary Schmidt. And of course, Gary Schmidt works with the Board of County Commissioners, and your role, of course, has always been the policy piece and that high-level piece, which you're doing very, very well. We do appreciate that. We are now, well, we have been doing some advanced planning, but we're trying to expand our plans, advanced planning group. We're talking about what if there is a second wave? We're talking about, you know, what we do with PPE, if we do have a second wave, because we don't know what this looks like. We've looked at 1918 data. Because historically, that's what we have to look at, and we very well could have a second wave even in the fall, depending what this particular virus does. We're looking at economic recovery, the need for discharge care and housing, as well as part of that advanced planning. Just one more thing I want to talk about hospitals, just briefly. I've been working quite a bit this morning with our regional group, which works with us on our hospitals to make sure that they have PPE. And I have received the survey that has been done with all of the hospitals. We're looking through that very closely. And I do plan on having, connecting myself with every, the three hospitals, systems that we have here in Clackamas County later today, to ask them questions and make sure that they do have the PPE that they need. If we can help them out for our stock, from our stockpile that we have here at the county, we will do so. I will say that gowns are like gold. We do not have enough gowns in the region at all, or even in the state, so to say that. And also hand sanitizer. We did get some hand sanitizer in, so we're sending that out now, but that still remains to be a scarce resource. Anyway, so we're going to try to, as much as we can, close that gap a little bit with our hospitals today. And that is my high-level overview. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions?
Commissioner Humberson. Commissioner Savis, Mr. Chair.
I just wanted to ask you forward it to us, the report as soon as you can.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Nancy, for everything, everything you're doing, and thank you for sending me the organizational chart of the EOC. And as I'm looking at it right now, I got to open up my phone, and I can't open up my iPad, because I keep trying to keep the meeting alive, and all people see is your hands. So maybe staff can figure out a way to use the menu bar, get our menu bar at the bottom versus the top. But I'm looking in here, and so I see that in the whole, as you mentioned, the liaison group and all the other ones I see here in the different colors, quite an elaborate org chart. But how does the Board of County Commissioners really, who are not present on this org chart, I gathered, that's just simply, I just see the administrator or administrative assistant, but I don't see how, anywhere near where the Board of County Commissioners is anywhere involved in this at all.
And we can change the org chart. That is, that is enclosed here for the Emergency Operations Center. Actually, so, and we'll send this out to you when we get it redone. There would be, there's a dotted line that goes to Administrator Schmidt. And from there, it goes up to the BCC as the policy group, which of course is what you are for the entire county at all times. So we will get that to you, where it has the BCC, as well as Administrator Schmidt on the org chart.
Well, yeah, thank you for that. And I only just kind of bring that at the forefront right now a little bit. But what I really wanted to talk about, to some degree, is you mentioned the gowns. I know that we're hearing stuff about the N95 mask in the hospitals and some news articles. I have family that are in the medical industry, both in Oregon and California. And so I'm hearing similar things from them and people I bumped into over the weekend, getting a prescription filled for my sister at Costco. Was glad to see that over the weekend, half the people there seemed to be wearing masks, the people walking in and out of the stores. That was refreshing. But I was just thinking, when I, when you hear the frontline people saying they have nothing, and you're watching all these people walking in at the store with something. It's hard to really determine how, you know, you, I think all of us want to help, so we're compelled to help. It's our human nature to help, especially the people on the front lines that are doing all the great work. But I'm hoping that, I'm not sure what's happening with the media and some of this conflicting information, but there is, you're right, there is a shortage, and I just don't know how we get our arms around that and how we can expand those lines of communication. I think you made some comments about that, and I don't, not asking you to expand on that, but I just want to convey that out there, that it is a little unsettling sometimes to, you know, hear about stuff. We heard of the article in the Oregonian where FEMA confiscated a lot of PPE because it had dry rot, and that was the, that was the article. We heard similar things from people in the area that FEMA had confiscated everything they brought us. So how much of the formula that we got at Clackamas County that we disseminated went to some of our employees in particular? Did it make it to our internal organizations, such as whether it's DTD, it's our health departments? I mean, how much do we can actually say, hey, we put our hands on it, we've got something?
So as far as what went directly to the county, we have obviously EMS and, you know, like our fire agencies, you know, has gotten quite a bit. We're working with long-term care facilities, so a lot of it is going external, and we can only use it for our medical care staff or law enforcement. So we have had some that, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I do know that we have given some to CCSO. We were also giving some to the jail. The jail does have medical staff, so we're making sure as much as we can that they have what they need for the jail staff and for the medical staff. We have also internally, our clinics, if our clinics need it, though, so far, they haven't asked for a lot, our clinics. So they, I think they had quite a few already stocked up. So that is what has went out internally. As far as DTD and some of the other departments, we have worked with them as much as we can, but we cannot give them the stock that we have here, because it is for medical staff. So we've worked with them to try to get them homemade masks, for example, as some of, you know, even gloves and stuff like that, that we might not be able to give them, but we have worked with them to try to find where they can get that type of stuff. The hand sanitizer that we did get in, again, it goes to the medical staff, which it has most of that, or at least half of that has went out that we received in. And again, those are things too, that it's the priority is the medical staff and the medical community. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that helps. Did you have any first, did we have any firsthand experience of material that we received, or PPE we received that had any dry rot or any aging issues?
No. And it's in fact, we actually, the first that we sent out was from H1N1, as you know, was a few years ago. All of that was tested to make sure that it was still viable. And all of that, I believe, I think almost all of that has went off of our shelves by now, and we have not received any complaints, and we did not find any dry rot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And as far as the formula, Paul, we're actually, the tri-county chairs are writing a letter to the governor, asking him how they're calculating the formula, what it is. Because like Nancy will get a shipment, a large shipment, then a small shipment, and then another small shipment. Frankly, we don't know what the calculation is and how they determine who they send that to, so we're asking her to define that. Representative Salinas mentioned it yesterday, that that's common throughout the state, so we're working on that. All right, any other questions?
I guess, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Humberson.
Nancy, the thought occurs to me, because I called a couple of our fellow county commissioners out in Sherman County and in Willawa County, and they've just had their first two cases. Which shows that the rural areas are behind the urbanized areas, but it's going to hit them in, on your back burner. But thinking about it going forward, we may need to be able to provide some help in that direction for our colleagues and friends in the rural areas of the state. So, you know, just might have that as sort of a, in the back of your mind, how would we do that if that call comes and if we need to do it?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. That is correct. And also, there was a big article in the New York Times this morning about the rural areas and how we're starting to see them get hit, and they do have fewer resources than in the more metropolitan, so that point is well taken.
Thank you.
One more question, Nancy. Do you have a specific inventory level you keep?
You mean the way you try to keep on hand at all times?
Yes.
No. We, we have a formula that we have worked with a fire defense board on, so we're trying to make sure, especially those that do transport, have at least a week's supply, if we can. And then we're working with our long-term care facilities very closely to say, well, what do you need, who is really doing that direct patient care? That we, we could, like our N95 mask right now, we have, that hasn't been the real issue. We thought it was going to be, as I said early on, but we could run out of gowns today, whenever we do our shipment today. So we don't try to keep it on hand. We're trying to get everything out, because the last thing I want is to be sitting here on supplies when people need it.
Because I think a citizen asked specifically on our call with Gary and you, maybe it was another one, I've had so many. Do we have a stockpile? And the answer is no.
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, we send out, like I said, we're trying to be very responsible and get it out, and we are not sitting on things at all.
But in the future, I mean, after the curve is flat, are we going to look at some stock that on hand, should this come back in the fall?
So the problem with that, Commissioner, is that in order, for like the H1N1 stock that we do have, I happen to know where that was stored, and it was stored in a climate that will keep dry rot from happening. We do not have a climate to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, thank you very much, Nancy, for your time and your work, and you guys are doing a great job. Oh, Paul?
Yeah, just one other thing, just for my colleagues to know, and Nancy, if I'm air anywhere, please jump in. But the formula, which I'm really curious to see, and I think your letter, Jim, that you mentioned that the chair sent out, I thought was interesting, because it seemed to have a lot of similar messages or concerns that I'm hearing as well. But there's two, apparently a different formula for the hospitals. So I understand that we have a formula where we distribute it out to, Nancy knows what that is, I don't. And then there also that the distribution to the hospitals is actually, I guess, under the auspices of Multnomah County?
So for this particular region, yes, that is true. So here's what I do know is what part of the formula is, we, so the counties with, let's say, Clackamas County, each county was going to get 100,000 N95s. So then they look at that and say, okay, well, then the hospital systems, their headquarters are in Multnomah County, so we're going to put those through Multnomah County. So of those 100,000 in each county, we're taking, I think it's like 30 or 50% or something, they take that off, and then they send that to Multnomah County, and that is what is there for the hospitals. So what we have left then goes to our EMS agencies, fire districts, as well as our long-term care facilities and those others.
Yeah, the reason I want to bring that up particularly, and again, I don't know the math, I don't know the formula, I don't know how they're working, but I want to point something out. It was, I think it was about three or four years ago, we were at a AOC Government Affairs Committee, and that's Association of Counties, for anyone who's listening. And what had come up there was property tax, it was basically a property tax issue when Bob Roman was our tax assessor, and he was participating in that call and subsequent calls. But basically, the gist of it was, was that of all the 36 counties in the state, Clackamas County had the most amount of hospital facilities than, per capita, or in number than any other county. So if the formula is based on population, therefore, if the formula that, of this distribution of FEMA or whatever material is that goes to Multnomah County is done by population and not really done by facility. Then if there is a larger proportion of hospitals and medical properties in Clackamas County, serving area people in all different counties, then potentially, if that formula doesn't match, then there might be a under proportion, or a shortage amount for certain areas, and that's a concern.
So, but whenever the hospitals, when they get that cash in and that proportion, it is for that whole hospital system. It is not just for Multnomah County hospitals, not just for Washington, it's for the whole system. So that should be taken into account at the headquarters level for the hospital.
Yeah. And I, yeah, and I, of course, I would not be raising this if I had, have not heard from a lot of people that are nurses and are doctors and so forth, that they're seeing the shortages. If it wasn't for that, I wouldn't be raising this. So I just want to just point that out, that there's just an inconsistency in messaging. I'm not sure where it's at, but it keeps on, it keeps on raising this, rearing its head.
Yeah. So, yeah, Commissioner, I'm sorry if that, because I am not saying that there is not a shortage in the hospitals. That is not my message. My message is that we have the cash and the, whatever, and the state has a formula that we don't know. But I do know that, yes, we, and we have that formula here at the local level. We know, you know, what the hospital systems are getting. I am certainly not saying that there isn't a shortage. So please, I hope, I did not mean to, if that's what you heard, I'm sorry, that's not what I was saying.
All right, well, we need to move on. Thank you very much, Nancy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, Gary?
Next, still on COVID-19, we have Stephen Matcor, County Council, to present to you Commissioner's approval of an addendum number two to the Resolution Number 2020-14, Emergency Declaration related to COVID-19. So I'll pass it to Stephen.
Thank you, Gary. Everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Excellent. Good morning, Commissioners and others. I have before you a second addendum to the emergency declaration. The second addendum adds additional items, and it also repeals an initial emergency measure that the board had implemented. We're going to start with items five and six, which are recommendations from the sheriff's office to allow the sheriff to more nimbly and appropriately manage his jail population. And those were items that we had discussed previously with the sheriff's office. Item number seven is to order those who are solid waste and recycling haulers and franchisees within the county prohibiting them from discontinuing collection service for non-payment. Also prohibiting the additional, any late fees associated with non-payment or late payments. We have item number eight, which is kind of a supplement to our code, which would allow for a hearings officer to hear violations of the, any emergency measure. We currently don't have that provision in our code, so we are delegating authority for enforcement and hearing those matters to a hearings officer. We also have two items, number nine and 10, which are directed towards the placement of vulnerable populations within lodging facilities within Clackamas County. There are some which are being placed by a county voucher or a county-sponsored voucher, and we want to ensure that for lodging providers who do accommodate these people, that it doesn't rise to the level of a landlord-tenant relationship, that it stays at the level of a transient occupancy. Because as we know, there is a moratorium imposed on evictions for residential and non-residential. So we don't want those lodging operators to be subjected to that type of lengthy onerous legal process when they are trying to house the vulnerable population. We are also delegating, on number 11, delegating authority to the county administrator or his designees to enforce any of the emergency measures. And that allows for a clear line of authority to enforce any of the various measures that the board has declared during this emergency. Lastly, what we are also doing is, as you know, the board had proclaimed an eviction moratorium for residential and non-residential evictions. Since the board did that, the governor, by way of two separate orders, has issued essentially the same type of thing. A prohibition on residential and non-residential evictions due to non-payment during dependency of this emergency. So in order to eliminate any confusion, any, and to reconcile the two areas of law, county and state, we are repealing the board's first emergency measure, which was the moratorium, and letting the governor's order control on that. And that concludes the additional emergency measures that we have proposed for the board's consideration. It would need, if the board were to approve of these, it would need a motion and a second and a majority vote. I'm here to answer any questions the board might have.
So Stephen, the hearings officer wouldn't hear evictions or, evictions or, correct?
That is correct, Chair. That would be reserved for the courts, and those are going to be on moratorium.
Yeah, so that's eviction, late fees and fines. That's now a state issue, not a county issue.
That is correct, Chair.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if I may, you have questions from Commissioner Humberson and then Commissioner Fisher.
Okay, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was consistent with the discussions that we had the other day, so I'm good to go. I just wanted to ask Administrator Schmidt or Nancy Bush to contact Betsy Labarge to disseminate the answer to that particular question regarding transient properties being used and the, so what term? The eviction, the eviction rules not applying, basically, based on our, on our emergency declaration. I want to make sure that that group of people gets that information, along with the hotels and motels that are currently helping us out.
Yeah, landlord-tenant.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure they get the word there. The ones that raised the question, I'd like to get back to them an answer. Other than that, I'm good to go.
Yes, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you. Just a question on process. I know we had extensive discussion on this during our policy session, and then it was publicly noticed in that packet, but it's not, this emergency declaration, I don't see it in our materials today. Does that matter at all as far as the noticing of this emergency declaration?
These materials weren't posted, is that what you're saying, Commissioner?
Yeah, I don't, I know it was posted for our Tuesday policy session, but as I go through the packet for today, I do not see it for today.
Ideally, it would have been included in there, but no, it won't make it defective or fatal by any means.
All right.
Yeah, I, I found it in the, because of the email, that was the way I found it. So I concur with the observation made by Commissioner Fisher. So I guess we should make sure that we add that to the packet for the, for the online piece.
All right, it's going to be done.
Yep. So if there's no other discussion, I'm happy to make the motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, I move we approve addendum number two to Resolution Number 2020-14, declaring a local state of emergency and declaring emergency measures.
Second.
It's, it moved in second that we approved addendum number two to Resolution Number 2020-14, declaring a local state of emergency and declaring emergency measures. Any further discussion? Please poll the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Humberson.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The next item, Gary?
Yes, next we are going to a public hearing, Commissioners. This is a public hearing on the Proposed Community Development Twenty Twenty Action Plan. Mark Siros from Community Development will be presenting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. Uh, there are three elements to this public hearing. First, we will review last year's performance of our CDBG Home and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs. Second, we will review the Proposed Twenty Twenty Community Development Action Plan. And third, we will provide an opportunity for citizens to testify on the plan or the county's housing and community development needs. The board does not need to take action today. The draft plan is posted on our website and is out for public comment until April twentieth. After the public comment period, we will finalize the plan, incorporate the public comments and submit the plan to this board for approval at the April thirtieth business meeting. The action plan is due to HUD by May fifteenth so that we can begin our regular program year on July first. All our programs are HUD funded. We are considered an urban county by HUD. The amount of funding allocated is determined by HUD through a formula that includes population and poverty data determined by the U.S. Census. We have cooperation with cities through our intergovernmental agreements to include city population data with our total county population data. Before you, you have handouts that include the draft Twenty Twenty Action Plan, the public hearing notice and the two-year funding recommendations. Now, I will review our performance over the past year. Our community development block program funds, CDBG funds, are primarily used for construction of infrastructure and public, public facility improvements, some public services and housing rehabilitation. Over the last year, we funded about two point seven five million dollars in projects with CDBG funding of one point five million. We used program income of two hundred and fifty thousand and we leveraged other funds through match of over a million dollars. Some of our projects include the East Clarndon Street Improvement Project in Gladstone, the Arbor Terrace Rehabilitation Roofing Project in Malala and the Head Start Classroom, which is just beginning on River Road. Our housing rehabilitation program over the last two years has provided ninety-six households with grants and loans to repair their homes so that elderly and disabled persons can stay in their homes safely. Our housing rehabilitation program includes the North Clackamas Renewal Area Funds. Using those funds, we're able to rehabilitate twenty-three homes in the North Clackamas Renewal Area. With our home program funds, we have provided some gap funding for construction and preservation of affordable housing units. Our annual funding amount of home is about nine hundred thousand dollars a year, but with that nine hundred thousand dollars, we're able to leverage about nine million dollars of state and private funds for projects. Some of our recently completed projects are the Northwest Housing Alternative Campus Family Housing Units, which some of you were at the grand opening of those units, and the Pleasant Avenue Veterans Housing, which is now called Clayton Moore Commons. So those twenty-four unit, units of permanent housing. And then we have the ongoing Rosewood Terrace Project, which is constructing two hundred and twelve units of affordable housing. Uh, those are eight buildings, apartment buildings on Audi Road, and some of those buildings are already completed and they're starting to have tenants move in right now. We also have the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, which provides homeless services. With a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of funding, combined with other projects, other funds rather, we've provided for four hundred and one people getting housing services. Of those four hundred and one people, two hundred and twenty-seven were children. And during the past program year, three hundred and fifty people were able to move out of shelter and into more permanent housing. We fund the Annie Ross House Homeless Family Shelter, which is part of the Northwest Housing Alternatives Campus. That was completely rebuilt and opened in October of last year. And we also fund the Clackamas Women's Services, which is a domestic violence shelter in Clackamas County. Part of these funds, we also use for rapid rehousing services and part of the funds, we also use to support our homeless management information system, which is funding and the, the, the system really provides support to all county homeless services and provides for a mechanism for us to report to HUD and to the public about our homeless services. That completes kind of my performance review of our program over the last year. And for now, I'll go into the Twenty Twenty Action Plan, which really sets our plan for the coming year. As you all know, this is an annual implementation plan, which is in the fourth year of our five-year strategic plan, which is also called a consolidated plan. The action plan identifies the actions and activities that the specific federal and non-federal resources we will use each year to address our priority needs and which specific goals in the consolidated plan we're addressing. The plan lists our Twenty Twenty Funding Recommendations for CDBG Home and ESG Programs. The plan, when submitted to HUD, is our application for that funding for the next year. The CDBG program funds have increased by six percent since last year to two point two, uh, two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which again is a six percent increase. And then the home funds have also increased by about nine percent to one point, uh, one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And the ESG program funds of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars actually represents a one percent decrease. That concludes kind of my review of the plan and you have before you the list of funding recommendations. The list of funding recommendations actually has two years worth of recommendations, but we're only going to include the Twenty Twenty projects in this year and I'll be back next year with a Twenty Twenty One Action Plan that will have the other projects listed. Um, so that concludes my presentation and now, uh, if the board pleases, they can open it up for public comment or I can respond to any questions.
Any, any questions from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, we have Commissioner Humbertson, then Commissioner Savas, then Commissioner Fisher.
Okay, let's do the questions for us. So, Ken? Your mic's not on.
On page four of the Annual Action Plan for Twenty Twenty, there's a list of, of six goals to accomplish and a series of numbers on how many persons would benefit. If you add that all up, that's about thirty thousand, give or take, people. But I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that that's actually duplicative. In other words, some people may fall into more than one category. Am I correct on that?
That's correct. We, we do our best to measure these things, but sometimes we help people with two different programs.
Okay, so you don't just want to add them up and say that it's thirty thousand people, clearly?
Correct. And we report that in our, our, our report to HUD is called a CAPR, a Consolidated Annual Performance Report. And that, that shows up in a separate report that we send to HUD in, in September.
Okay, thank you very much. Paul?
Yeah, um, thanks, Mark, for your presentation. I'd be remiss if I didn't point out a couple of things. This program, uh, is often targeted towards lower income areas, lower income populations. Uh, I'd be, uh, this is probably the best time to point out for, that the Twenty Twenty Census, why it's so important. Um, the monies that are derived to, to fund this program are from the federal government, but it counts on population counts. So everyone who has got a Twenty Twenty Census form in the mail, and I know I have, I know that everyone else has, please fill it out. Please make sure it's complete. Please, please encourage others to fill that out because if we have an undercount, if people don't fill that out, we get less monies to implement these programs. And this is one of the best programs I've seen in the county. Uh, do some great work. Uh, we've done wheelchair ramps, we've done sidewalks for, for those that are, um, uh, in, in need of a safer access or access period, um, those with disabilities. So it's really, really important that those monies, um, uh, that we get our fair share of that. And that's why I want to point out, uh, please participate in the Twenty Twenty Census. Great job, Mark, and, um, uh, um, probably trying to fill the shoes of Kevin Coe. I know he's been doing a great job with this program for all these years and, um, just want to wish Kevin a great retirement, even though this is not the best conditions right now to be out there and join retirement, but he's retired, so I just want to say thank you.
Uh, also, on the census, we also got a card with an ID number and an internet site, so you can go online and do the census too, which I already did. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you for the report and the presentation. I've, along with my other Commissioners, I'm sure, have been participating in many national calls about where the dollars will come to the state and then hopefully to us. And I do know that there are increase in many of these funding categories. Well, how will that play into this plan? How will it be revised? Do we know how much, how many resources we're going to be getting? Just if you could just speak to that in general, then if I have follow-up questions, I will ask.
Yes, Commissioner Fisher, so I believe you're referring to the CARES Act. And we, uh, we are, we haven't been awarded yet, but I know that we'll get one point three million of CDBG COVID funds and we will be getting six hundred and forty-six thousand of Emergency Solutions Grant Funds. And I'm working with all the divisions in H three S to kind of plan for those funds. And we're going to coordinate that with the Emergency Operations Center to make sure that, uh, we're addressing COVID-related items with that. Right now, with our Emergency Solutions Grants, we're anticipating that we'll spend most of that money on homeless folks and food uh, to make sure they're getting services and getting shelter and particularly anyone who's diagnosed. Uh, we want to make sure they're inside and safe and, uh, um, that we can get them services. And for the, the CDBG funds is also COVID-related activities and we're looking at whatever shelters. And earlier, we mentioned hotels, uh, so we'll be looking at hotels and, uh, getting rooms for everyone. But again, we're planning to use those funds, uh, through H, H three S or the Health Housing and Human Services Department. We're coordinating through Social Services, through Behavioral Health, through the health centers and with the Emergency Operations Center to come up with a plan. And then we'll be bringing that plan before you and we'll be, uh, we'll be informing HUD about how we'll use that plan. Um, but we still haven't gotten a notice from HUD yet that, and we want to, I'm keeping my eyes on my inbox and your inbox possibly for notice from HUD about the award. So we want to get those documents signed and returned to HUD as soon as possible so we can get that money in the bank and start spending it accordingly.
You good with that?
Just another follow-up. You said we all have thirty-six thousand in ESG funds?
No, it's going to be for, the CARES Act will provide six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, which is about three times or four times what our regular annual amount is. But, uh, I'm working with Social Services Division, the Housing Authority and other divisions in, uh, the Health Housing and Human Services Department. And we'll coordinate all that through the Emergency Operations Center.
Great, okay, thank you. I, um, thought I had to miss, have misheard when I thought you said thirty-six thousand. It was a little bit of a cutout with the internet connection. I went, oh, boy, we're in deep, deep trouble because the cost of this work is so much more with the COVID-19 response. So thank you so much for that.
Kevin, anybody else?
Uh, we have Administrator Schmidt and then Commissioner Savas and then Commissioner Humbertson.
All right.
Uh, just quickly, I have Commissioners, I have asked staff at the EOC to coordinate for you all of the CARES Act funding that will come to Clackamas County for all departments so that we can have that information for you. So Emergency Operations Center is preparing that now.
Paul?
Yeah, um, thank you, Gary. I was just going to ask just for that because I just learned yesterday about, uh, at least the six hundred thousand portion. So, um, Mark, if I'm not mistaken, uh, the CARES Act piece that we'll receive was just about two million then, between the two numbers you gave us?
Correct. That's just for CDBG and ESG funds. The, uh, as a department, we're trying to identify all other fund sources as well. We want to coordinate that through the Emergency Operations Center.
Right. Uh, yeah, we could get some kind of a briefing, not just on these two elements that Mark's talking about, but also on the business program and everything else. We are getting a lot of requests for help and the CARES Act's been cited as the source for a lot of that assistance.
All right, Ken?
Yeah, I was just going to ask for that information myself, um, in bullet point format, if you don't mind, and, and, and not a lot of, um, long-winded bureaucraties. It's simpler to get out, it's, it's simpler to get it out to the public and explain it to them when it's in, in basic bullet points.
Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, uh, we'll open for public comment. Do we have anybody online?
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Yes, I'm Dylan Blalock with Public and Government Affairs. I'll be coordinating both public comment for this specific public hearing and later on for general comment. Um, if any attendees, and we do have quite a few, would like to provide a comment specific to this public hearing, the Proposed Community Development Twenty Twenty Action Plan. You can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. We do have one, uh, the, the handle is Siobhan Taylor. Let me bring, uh, Siobhan in and unmute her. Or Siobhan, I think you have to unmute yourself. Okay, and Siobhan, I believe you're on now.
All righty. Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes, please go ahead and give your, yep, give your name and area and keep your, uh, comment to three minutes, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Siobhan Taylor. I am a Clackamas County resident. I live in the city of West Lynn. First of all, I want to thank you and all of your staff for all of the conscientious effort that you are making on our behalf during this COVID-19 crisis. You are deeply appreciated. Today, I'm also here to thank you for your support of CDBG funding for the historic West Lynn City Hall Project as we renovate the building and make it specifically more ADA compliant. Over two, for over two years now, our coalition has been working to actively engage efforts to reactivate this historic City Hall building as a multicultural center. Over that course of time, we've built solid relationships with the city of West Lynn, partnerships with community groups and local governments and businesses, from the LOX Commission to Clackamas County Tourism to the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron, PGE and multiple county arts and heritage partners. Clackamas County Commissioner Martha Schrader is good enough to represent you on our Board of Directors. We've achieved some incredible landmarks and I wanted to share some of those so you can see what an investment you were getting for these wise spent dollars. Our own investment, Willamette Falls, uh, has spent over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in our own due diligence, project management, project design on this building project, not to mention over fifty thousand dollars in our own professional service. Uh, we have raised over a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in grant money. Our most recent funder, I'm really proud to announce, is the Oregon Community Foundation. We are so proud that they are sharing our vision for a multicultural center in Clackamas County. Our feasibility study has been approved by the National Park Service and our legislative effort with Congress is getting ready to launch. The State Heritage Commission just accepted our management plan, so we have a business plan to help visitors explore this heritage area and that is going to do so much for Clackamas County. And we have our partnership with the tribe, Metro Clackamas County, the LOX Commission and local governments. It's all stronger than ever, not to mention our ties with our fellow heritage, arts and civic partners and business groups. All we needed was a space for us all to meet in and collaborate in. West Lynn asked and we answered with partnering with them on their waterfront development project. Oregon City's new tourism stakeholder group asked, we've answered. I'm partnering with them in their project. Clackamas County Heritage Council has asked and I'm sitting at a table with them to be as collaborative and helpful in every way that we possibly can. This allows us to bring all these groups together, share resources, events and more. The community needs the space to cultivate young artists. The community needs the space to cultivate young artists, present workshops from a tribal perspective and provide needed community meeting space. Everything that's been asked of us, we have done and we are prepared to do more. And that key ingredient is accessibility for all people. Yes, we've got an elevator in this future multicultural center, but we don't have bathrooms that are accessible, doorways that are accessible, level floors. This is going to give us that opportunity. With it, you're going to get a fully functioning multicultural center where all people in Clackamas County will be able to access and benefit from programming, outreach and inclusivity. Be assured, we will put these dollars to work in a profoundly responsible way in partnership with the city of West Lynn and in partnership with you. It's already working for the good of our community. Our tribal partners remind me all of the time that we are looking seven generations forward. Your help today ensures that we continue to do just that.
Thank you very much. Yelling anyone else on this?
Yes, thank you, Siobhan. Uh, yes, Chair, uh I'm going to bring in uh Trell Anderson. Uh, Trell, uh if you could unmute yourself, Trell, there we go. And go ahead and you are on with the Commissioners, we give your name, your area and uh keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, Trell.
Hello, everyone, thank you very much. It's good to see you all. Um, I'm Trell Anderson, Executive Director at Northwest Housing Alternatives. We're located in Milwaukee but serve all of Clackamas County with our Annie Ross Family Homeless Shelter Program as well as our Home Based Program, assisting homeless families transition from homelessness into permanent housing. Uh, we're also a statewide housing development organization and have over 2,000 properties across the state, 500 under construction currently and another 500 in pre-development pipeline. Uh, thank you for the opportunity today to testify in support of the Community Development Block Grant Plan. Uh, I want to thank staff, uh Mark, thank you for uh putting this together in a way that supports um in particular the the services component of this. Um, we're looking forward to the ongoing support for the Annie Ross uh Family Shelter. Um, this is part of the funding and overall package that the county provides to Northwest Housing Alternatives in support of the shelter. We're very appreciative of it. Um, just a quick update on the shelter, we remain fully operational under the COVID um social distancing type of requirements. Um, to do that, we actually have moved half of our families. Remember that the shelter has the capacity to uh host uh eight families at a time. Um, for social distancing, we have moved four families into motel rooms. Um, and that's going to be an additional expense to us. So uh Mark and Commissioners, we appreciate consideration under emergency funding uh for this additional expense in keeping families off the street and working uh working with them towards permanent housing. Um, in fact, we have, we are continuing to move folks into permanent housing. Even last week, I believe we had two placements. Um, and we are work continuing to work with uh coordinated access, which the the county operates. Again, um, we're so grateful of the partnership and in working with Clackamas County, the staff in H3S uh and the coordination efforts that go on. We're always appreciative of all of you as elected officials recognizing the role that Northwest Housing Alternatives and the Annie Ross plays in the community. Um, so I've I've thanked Mark and I thank all of you. And um one last thank is um, you know, the Here Together Campaign and the Metro Campaign for uh cert for funding for uh homeless services across the metro area. I just wanted to say thank you to each of you for signing on in support uh of that effort. Um, it, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. We need to get the vote out, uh it's trending in our direction. And um that can be a complete game changer for uh homeless services in Clackamas County. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the work you do, Trell. Uh, you're doing a great job. Northwest Housing Alternatives, Annie Ross has been a great partner. So thank you very much, too. All right, anybody else?
Yes, we do, we just had one more, thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. I'm going to bring in Michelle uh Milenbach. Uh, Michelle, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself, great. And now just go ahead and give your name, your area, and please keep your comment to three minutes, please. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Michelle Milenbach. I am a resident near Billquist Elementary School um in the Milwaukee area. And I am really glad to be able to be part of this today. Um, I'll admit, I'm I'm new to engaging in civil government and even just um listening in on your meeting is a new uh is a new thing for me. So I actually had two questions. Um, the first is, I was wondering if you could direct me to a resource where I could educate myself about the scope of local government. I realize that there are different responsibilities that fall with different government governing bodies and I would just like to understand our government better. And then my second um thing that I wanted to bring is that I actually have a safety concern for our community. Um, and that is, I'm wondering about, um, and I realize I don't know if this is within your scope or where I would go with this. Uh, I'm wondering about the installation of 5G technology in our schools. Um, I live really close to Billquist and we heard some really loud generator noise last week. And in just a local conversation on Nextdoor, um, someone commented that she had seen a lot of internet trucks outside. And I'm just hearing things from different places that are really concerning to me. So I would love it if you could comment on that.
Anyone, I I don't know what uh anything about the the noise, uh is it Comcast?
Yeah, they said um the person who had actually seen the truck said she saw a lot of Comcast trucks outside. Um, and this is just something that concerns me as far as some of the news that I've seen on a on a national and a global level for 5G.
Yeah, okay, I not sure we have an answer on that. Paul, did you have something you want to add?
Yeah, I would just just ask um Michelle to, if she can, uh leave her contact information with um staff. Um, and uh you're actually in the Oak Grove area, so you're kind of in my backyard. Um, I've been watching a couple of things on Nextdoor, so I'm kind of aware of a little bit of that. And on my walk this morning, I I heard something, may not have been associated that whatsoever. But um uh I I would happy to connect with you and uh get to the bottom of that and see if that is just a one time thing and it goes away or or whatnot. But uh happy to connect with you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Yeah, and yeah, leave your uh at your email address and we'll get you that information about county government, we're the best form of government and uh appreciate your call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Dylan?
Uh, I didn't know if Administrator Schmidt had his hand up. I saw for a second there.
I I just briefly, yeah, um as far as local government, uh our county website has some good information on what Clackamas County government does, as does the Association of Oregon Counties, which their website is oregoncounties.org, O R G. Has a good description of what county government does uh here in Oregon. So that I hope may be helpful for you.
Just so you know, one other saying, you've seen one county, you've seen one county. Counties are very different. What we do versus Multnomah or Washington County is considerably different. The forms of government are are similar, uh various powers and what uh Multnomah County is basically human resources or human services. And uh they have very few roads, we have lots of roads and provide lots of variety of services. So with that, uh uh close the pub, anyone else?
No, Chair.
Uh, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Um, and uh announce that uh we'll uh this will come back to the board for action April 30th, 2020 for our regular scheduled business meeting. Thank you very much, and Gary, what's up next?
So thank you, Mark, for your presentation. Uh, next is the consent agenda, and I'll ask the Clerk Kevin to read that.
Thank you, Administrator Schmidt, on today's consent agenda.
You've got a flag up.
Wait just a minute here. Well, we'll we'll go ahead and we'll take care of this for you. Uh, under Health Housing and Human Services, approval of agreement number 9683 to Provider Participation Agreement with Care Oregon for Behavior Healthcare Services. Approval of uh agreement number 9528 to a Personal Services Agreement with Northwest Family Services for Patient Referrals for Behavior Healthcare Services. Under our Department of Transportation Development, Approval of an Intergamo Agreement to Provide Planning Services to the City of Gladstone. Approval of a Public Works Emergency Response Cooperative Assistance Agreement. Under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. And under our Business and Community Services, Approval of Modification Number Seven of Grant Agreement 13 dash SA dash 11060600 dash 013 between Clackamas County and the USDA Forest Service, Mount Hood National Forest for the Dump Stoppers Program. And Approval of Research Services Agreement Number 28778 between Clackamas County and the University of Oregon. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, I believe Mary put that up on the screen. Thank you, Mary, I think. And uh anybody wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
There's second.
Second.
We moved in second, that we approve the consent agenda, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the Clerk to please uh uh take a poll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Humberton.
Aye.
Chair Bernard.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. The next item is what, Gary?
Uh, Citizen Communication is next, and I'll turn that over to Dylan.
All right, uh, thank you Administrator, oh, thank you Administrator Schmidt. I have several emails from our residents specific to today's Citizen Communication to relay to the board today, but I'll also add that if any attendees would like to provide a comment, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. Again, that's on the Zoom bar at the top or bottom, depending on your device. Uh, seeing none, the first email that we got is from Kim Beeler of Lake Oswego. Dear Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, my name is Kim Beeler and I live in the Palisades community of Lake Oswego. I am a sole proprietor with a home based business, which is 18 years old in May. My business has been drastically impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. One program I noticed recently was the city of Portland has launched a Prosper Portland Program to offer financial grants for Portland based businesses in order to assist them in surviving financially during this crisis. It would be terrific if Clackamas County would offer the same program for its small businesses that were stable prior to this unforeseeable crisis. Thank you, Kim Beeler. I'm just going to look at the, yep, go ahead.
So Kim, I'd like to respond to that, actually. Uh, Cl- uh, Multnomah County has a specific business tax uh and a number of taxes uh that Clackamas County does not. Our general fund is funded by uh property taxes and we get 18 cents out of every dollar. Uh, normally, uh should people be gambling, we might have uh ta- uh get uh our share of the revenue from lottery, but we don't have that now either. Uh, I know, and the other thing is urban renewal. Some of that uh funding is being funded through urban renewal funds. Clackamas County voters uh back prior, uh well, about four years ago, maybe maybe a little longer than that, actually required that we go out for a countywide vote for urban renewal uh monies. And uh that that's a a virtually impossible challenge, but something we'll be looking at in the future. We do still have one urban renewal area still collecting monies, but as was mentioned uh earlier, uh that specifically is road improvements, housing improvements, uh stuff to uh uh get that sewer connections, frankly. So that's a real challenge. I wish we did, uh but we don't. But there are uh small business grants uh that uh the SBAs uh offers uh and other opportunities uh uh that are being offered. I know Multnomah County and Washington County also have taxes that we don't. And so I appreciate the request, but I'm not sure how we would answer it.
Chair Bernard?
Yes.
So this is Commissioner Schrader. Um, I'm aware of the Prosper Portland Program. We were just briefed this morning, which I'll talk a little bit later in um indication, Commissioner Communication. Um, one of the things I'd like uh us to take a look at is the CARES Act is pretty complex, but there are dollars out there, as you said, through the Small Business Administration, um, that can help businesses. So if we can't directly do anything, there are federal resources. So I'd like to see if we can get a uh more of a analysis of what that is, uh get a white paper done and perhaps have that available to our businesses. I know our chambers have done a reasonably good job, but if there's something the county can do to help our smaller businesses, see what is available uh from the federal government and how they can access that, I think at least we can help help them mitigate the issues that they're facing. So I would, I was going to ask staff to possibly take a look at that in a little more detail. And uh maybe we can have um something on our website uh dealing with, you know, what smaller businesses can do to at least access those types of dollars.
That's a little more challenging as a home business where you don't have employees. I spoke to somebody yesterday who uh owns three or four companies and uh he was able to uh file online for federal resources and he said the form was very simple. Uh, so uh look online and see what uh information you can get. Did Paul, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I I appreciate Jim pointing you that you pointed out the uh to the caller that um we don't have a business income tax, we don't have those taxes, so therefore we don't have the resources. Uh, that's that's accurate. Um, I also appreciate Commissioner Schrader pointing out the CARES Act, it is complex. And um though I think maybe general bullet points might be helpful for some, um I my concern based on from what I've read thus far is it's so complex that we could actually maybe give someone a false sense of hope if they don't actually meet the technical criteria that's embedded in the CARES Act. So that's the double edged sword. But I do want to just uh highlight a point that came out of our um listing session that Commissioner Schrader and I participated in. And that was, if you are in Lake Oswego proper, um then perhaps either the city itself or the Chamber of Commerce might be helpful. I'm hoping that the Chambers of Commerce can come together and help guide um their staff, help guide some of their membership through the complexities of what this CARE Act's gonna gonna do and make sure they have available or knowledge of availability of resources and tools to help businesses in those areas. Um, so I I would point you to also to the to the um Chamber of Commerce as well.
And by the way, I I heard that uh uh Lake Oswego, like you said, if you're in Lake Oswego, uh you, uh Lake Oswego is offering money, uh uh some property tax money or additional income they've received to businesses in uh Lake Oswego proper. So be sure and reach out to your city.
Right, uh, Mr. Chair, a question from Commissioner Fisher.
That's Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, I've been tracking this issue pretty diligently. Um, I can say that Lake Oswego, you have to have a physical address and home based businesses aren't included in their 250,000 dollar grant. I um listened to the city council meeting where they discussed that and approved that home based business. So I mean, the, you know, excluding home based businesses. So I would suggest um as a citizen to contact the city council and to say, would you consider this? If it's compelling enough, they may alter their program. But also through the um the CARES Act, to just connect with your banker, whoever your.
Oh, you're, Commissioner Fisher, we lost your voice. Now your picture. No.
I'll show my iPad and it.
It's back.
Yeah, so just check with your banker, whoever does your banker for your small business, ask them the questions and then they will get you the information lickety splickety. them the questions, and then they will get you the information lickety splickety. I heard from Dan Fowler how quickly he was able to go through his local bank and actually has the funds in his account now due to COVID. So, so that's a, a very good resource, and it is happening quickly.
All right, thank you. Dylan?
Yes. Next comment from Kristen Campbell of Lake Oswego. She has two brief comments or questions. First, many homeowners are taking this time of shelter in place to organize items for donation of all kinds. Since the goodwill is not open at this time, can you give any guidance as to other organizations that are taking donations of any kind? If so, a listing of organizations, types of donations needed and accepted, and how to contact would be helpful. The second comment that she has is the information out in the media is extremely confusing about what kinds of PPE and levels of protection for professional medical workers to general workers is not sufficient. I have inquired with both Providence and Legacy Health with no success yet. How may the public help to gather any kinds of goods that might be used, and where should these items be taken? From home sewers to businesses with sports goggles and face protective shields, there has to be a good way to gather these items for evaluation and potential use in our community. And thanks, Kristen Campbell.
So it might be helpful, Kevin, if we have our, our emergency operations center phone number, email up. May we flash that at the end so that people can contact them, because I know they've taken homemade face shields, and we got them at the food bank the other day, and, oh, there's Nancy on the bottom. She could probably tell her that. Go ahead, Nancy.
Yeah, so thank you very much for that question. Yeah, if you go to our website, which is clackamas.us backslash coronavirus, or if you just go to the main page, there is a red banner at the top. You click on that, there is a place there that tells you where you can send donations, where you can drop them off, and we would be grateful for those and would get those out to our community.
Thank you, Kevin.
See the banner there, right on the top? Click on that, and it'll direct you. All right, perfect. Anything else, Dylan?
Yes, we do. We have two more comments that have come in. First, or third, from David Neville of Estacada. I have been a member of the Clackamas Women's Services Board for the last five years and would like to commend the commission for its consistent support of our mission to break down the isolation of survivors of domestic and sexual violence. COVID-19 has severely stressed CWS, other private nonprofits, and community partners by requiring the programs and their staff to adapt to a whole new set of unforeseen circumstances. We hope this is a once-in-a-century event, and we are giving it a once-in-a-century response. We understand that the county has many claims on its resources. We hope that you will see the value in at least maintaining your support for our programs and others that serve the vulnerable among us. These programs are a kind of infrastructure, different but no less important than physical infrastructure the county provides. Maintaining and expanding the capacity of programs like CWS in times of crisis should be among the county's highest priorities. Thank you for considering my remarks. Again, David Neville of Estacada.
Thank you, David.
Okay, and the last one is from Karen Gill of Oak Grove. With regional area boat launches closing, there is increased traffic at the Oak Grove Boulevard's old boat launch. Is there any, is there any way to close this off? Thank you, Karen Gill.
Good question. We'll take a look at that. Right, Gary? All right.
Yes.
That's the last one?
Yes, and I see no other attendees who are raising their hand using the raise hand Zoom feature, so I believe that is it. Chair Bernard.
All right, thank you very much, and county administrator updates.
Yes, commissioners, as always, I'd like to share with you some great work done by our community and our staff during this COVID-19 situation we're all facing. I first want to recognize the residents in of Lake Oswego who have offered lodging assistance to medical providers and first responders in the Portland area at a special reduced rate. So there, it's called a medical rate for medical professionals, including county employees who are first responders or work with medical healthcare issues. So thank you to the residents in of Lake Oswego for offering this service to our community. Here at the county, our Transportation Maintenance Division continues its good work of social distancing while also maintaining our county roads. The division is using two social distancing officers on site to ensure that tasks like pothole filling, road repair, and shoulder repair are done safely and hygienically. Clackamas County Dog Services continues to help reunite stray animals with their owners. There were 190 phone calls to Dog Services' main line last week alone. That's a lot of calls to handle, but our staff is there to support and serve the community with helping reunite them with their pets. Our county's Women, Infants, and Children, or WIC, program staff have gone above and beyond to ensure that services are provided and received to our community. While the county temporarily closed its building, its public buildings, the WIC team has adapted to new ways of serving and offering families support via telephone or video appointments and mailing electronic benefit transfer or EBT cards. The WIC staff are doing curbside delivery for participants that urgently need an EBT card or a breast pump, all while, all while practicing social distancing. Participation in our county WIC program has increased during this pandemic. During the last two weeks, the program enrolled an average of eight new families a day for a total caseload increase of eighty-seven additional participants in the month of March alone. Our Transportation and Development Department has designed a system to facilitate the submission of virtually all development-related applications digitally. Customers can submit new development proposals from land use to commercial and industrial permitting all online as of Monday of this week. This process was completed in about two weeks, and our DTD, DTD staff heard from a local developer who wrote to us, it took another jurisdiction, name withheld, five years and $12 million to go online. Nice work, and thanks to Clackamas County who did it at virtually no cost in two weeks. So thank you for that. Also, the home builders of Portland wrote to our DTD staff and said, thanks for supporting the construction industry and larger economy through this mighty lift. We really appreciate your communication and efforts to support housing, both on the land use and permitting side. So thank you to our transportation and development staff, to all our county staff for their very, very good work always, especially now during this pandemic. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, outstanding county administrator Gary Schmidt, and we'll move on to outstanding commissioners. Paul Savis.
Thank you, Chair. Wanted to just talk to folks a little bit about, number one, the beautiful weather we're having, and it's driving a lot of people outdoors, and it is beautiful, it's a great time of the year to get outside, and we kind of heard already a little bit about boat ramps closing. It's also near that time where the fish are biting and people want to get out there. We have people that want to recreate in our parks, and they're getting some, some messages that are not so appealing. For example, stay away because of social distancing. I heard last night, I don't, can't recall what jurisdiction, I don't necessarily think it was in Oregon, but on the news that they were going to put their staff, Parks District was to put their staff out in there and to help maintain social distancing, knowing that they can't keep people off the property. So I, I would, I'm going to look into that a little bit and see if our staff would consider something, because I, I saw that a lot of the NCPRD playground equipment at different parks has been wrapped in yellow tape or caution tape in light of the crisis, and also areas where that's been basically pulled off and people are still, kids are still playing on the equipment. So I think it's important, number one, that we keep the equipment in good order and, and sanitized or clean, but maybe we should consider looking at how we allow people to recreate. We have that saying in Clackamas County, live, work, and play in Clackamas County. Right now, there's restrictions on working, and there's apparently restrictions on playing. So with the, with the weather asking or compelling us to go outside and recreate, I think we need to find some, some opportunity for our public to enjoy our facilities as safe as possible, and maybe even give our staff, you know, some, some things to do and to operate as safely in that environment as possible. The other one I've been looking at, whether you look at the 1918 crisis, or you look at what we're currently under, articles talking about density and how that affects different populations, and the upside of density and the downside, and the upside of living in a rural area, the downside of living in a rural area. Lot of, not a lot of medical care and hospitals in the rural areas, so one risk that a lot of people take, including some of my family, when they live out in the rural areas, is that they're, they're miles and miles away from emergency medical supplies. At the same token, they're not as exposed to higher-density populations where things like the coronavirus and other illnesses can, can be transmitted, whether it's on transit, whether it's in housing. But there's some great articles, I would encourage people to take a look at that. I'd like to get some of those posted on my website, some of these links, and I don't know how much we could put on the county's landing page, but there's just a lot of material out there, and I know people have a lot of time to read, so what, what not a better time to actually educate ourselves. I want to, as I've been doing lately, just really, really proud of all the people out there on the front lines and all the different front lines of providing services, as I talked about, the people that are out there growing the food, or trucking the food, or stocking the shelves, or working in the stores, as well as our medical staff, our nursing staff, all our medical people that are helping the people on the, the real severe front lines where they're facing, faced with the virus itself. Our emergency responders, both police, sheriff, fire, our emergency responders such as AMR. I had, had the privilege to learn this week that AMR is really going out of their way to take whatever time they have or materials what they have and helping others, and really extending their programs out in the community. So huge kudos to everyone who's really taking that extra effort. My colleagues who participated on Monday on the FEW distribution, I wanted to just say, you know, thank you to you. I couldn't join you because had the, taking care of some medical issues in the household, and I'm hoping I can do that at some point, but I just want to just, I just want to acknowledge everyone that's taking the extra effort, everyone that's making the homemade mask and distributing out there for people. I mean, this is a time where community pulls together, and just really, really proud to be a member of our community, and just proud to see all the good work that people are doing and the caring for others. So be safe out there, and if we can be of any assistance, let us know, and really looking forward to, to, to turning the tide on this, on this, so we can get back ourselves normal as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Martha, she might have been knocked off. Are you back?
Yeah, I'm back. It's been a pretty busy morning.
So Martha, we can't understand what you're saying and your dog barking.
Okay. Why don't you go on to another commissioner?
Okay. Commissioner Fisher.
Hi there. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Paul, I really appreciate your comments. It's really hard to see these empty playgrounds around our community, and I really empathize with that. It really, it hurts my heart to see that. We have them all boarded up with yellow tape here in Lake Oswego when I go for my walk, and, and it is really sad. But I, and I also appreciate you saying with the live, work, and play, and probably the most important part of that is the live part, so sometimes we have to make some sacrifices in order to make sure we will be able to healthy, be healthy to live, to work and play here in the future. So some things that were very compelling for me this week that I've been thinking quite a bit about in some of my conversations with folks. We have a, a group of providers that work with people who are homeless that get on a phone call once a week, the Continuum of Care Committee, and some of the comments that were really kind of just very disturbing during this crisis are reports of some people not washing their hands for a week because they don't have access to their normal places to get washed up, such as the parks that have restrooms that were open, or they just don't have accessibility to wash their hands. And that's, that's really disturbing, those kinds of reports. Also reports of people with sanitary issues such as lice and other things from our homeless population, and all of that is so concerning. What is so refreshing is that when all of these concerns get brought up, our staff is taking notes, they're getting the information to the emergency operations, and we are taking steps to get sanitation out to folks and really responding, and it really emphasizes how critically important government is. I don't know if the rest of you are feeling this, but I am overwhelmed with the magnitude of how important everything we do at the local level is. At the same time, I'm incredibly impressed of everything that's happening at the federal and state, state level. I, I'm sure that all of you commissioners have participated in the federal calls in the different deputy secretaries for our government, get on the calls, and they just rapid-fire all of the information that is being done, and the way that rules and regulations are being quickly altered in order to get, get support to us quickly, and it's, it's incredible that we can work so well. So all of that is very, has made me think a lot about what's important and how well we work, and really appreciated my fellow commissioners, all of you, you have just been outstanding during this crisis. And Gary and Stephen, you guys have been there for us every step of the way, and Kevin, I'm looking at you here, and just really appreciate how quickly you provide the support and with such, such good attitude. It's really easy to get cranky, don't you guys agree? It's easy to get irritated and cranky during this time, and, you know, we haven't been irritated and cranky with each other, and that, that's good. That's something to really be grateful for, so thank you for that. I appreciate the time to share, and I appreciate all of you very much.
Thank you. Ken, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief. I want to echo Administrator Schmidt's comments regarding our staff's performance. Quite frankly, they have done incredible service for, for this community across the board, and they are to be commended for the work they've done, and you're doing a great job, Gary, of, of leading that team. So I really, I look back when we were first hiring you, and I'm thinking to myself, I think we did a pretty good job of getting the right guy on the job. Very pleased. The only other thing I want to say is that when you look at the numbers and listen to Nancy Bush, our EOC Director, you see that the work that, that the community's been doing for the most part in social distancing and all the other precautions that need to be taken, it is paying off. We are flattening the curve significantly, which means that the resources that we do have will be available for those who truly need them and need them badly. Let's just keep up the good work, keep doing what we're doing, and we will get through this fairly quickly and be able to move on with the live, work, and play that Commissioner Savis so eloquently mentioned. And I will close my remarks with that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I think I've taken care of the, I think I took care of the barking dogs, so we'll see what happens. And anyhow, I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention a few things. My first meeting today was with our Regional Solutions on Zoom. We heard Congressman Schrader and John Topogna from Eco Northwest. Congressman Schrader essentially went through some details of the CARES Act, and as you know, I'm still trying to wrap my head around the details of that, it's very technical. But he did say that basically things are moving along, and they're, they're assuming now they can start... They're, they're assuming now they can start getting relief to some of our businesses based on, you know, based on the criteria in the act sooner than later. And then John Topogna did a, a really wonderful slideshow about what the analysis of what the impact is economically. And we'll get copies of that, so as soon as I get that, I'll make sure I forward that to each and every one of you. The other thing I wanted to mention, I wanted to thank our Human Resources folks because they pulled together at the Public Training Safety Center a great opportunity for us to put food boxes together. And I had a great, oh, there's a dog licking. Commissioner Humbertson, you're getting kissed this morning by your puppy. Okay. Sorry. But at least your dog doesn't bark. I mean.
That killer of a terrier bark.
Anyway, anyway, it was a lot of fun with Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Humbertson. We have our masks that we wore. And each of us loaded up. Commissioner Humbertson did a great job because he had to go the farthest. He, he drove out to Estacada and Malala and Sandy with his boxes. I think you stuck to Oregon City, Jim. And then I was able to bring mine home, 21 boxes to our Lake Oswego Senior Center. And what was nice about that is they were so grateful because they had been getting, they had been getting calls from senior citizens who were suffering from food security and were ready to deliver those boxes right away. Also, so that, that was really good. I hope we can do that again. And I had an opportunity, you know, I kind of have a homeless friend who I pass every so often in my car when I'm driving into Portland. I was able to take one of those boxes and drop it off with him. So anyway, and finally, I want to end, you know, I've been thinking a lot about my parents lately because both my mom and dad were nurses. And I saw firsthand what it was like to be, from their perspective, on the medical front line. You know, they were nurses when penicillin was really beginning to just, you know, come into use. They were nurses when we were first getting the vaccinations for things like polio, for measles. They were kind of on the front of all these medical, you know, all these medical, you know, things that they had to deal with in hospitals. So my really, my thanks, my heartfelt thanks goes out to all those primary care frontline people in our hospital systems to stay, stay safe and stay, stay well. And we will hopefully continue with our Emergency Operations Center to get you the right materials that you need to stay safe. So thank you, Jim. Did the dog still bark in the background? Did you hear?
Yes.
Okay, so a little, but she's far, but she's farther away. Okay, she's farther away.
Distant barking.
Distant barking. It's distant, physical distance barking. Okay. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. You know, one comment about the parks taping off the play equipment. The challenge, of course, is you'd have to sanitize it just about every time somebody used it. And that's a big, big job. And I hope, you know, we'll have that stuff open. But the other comment about maybe some of our parks opening them up and having people there to make sure social distancing is, is a good idea. But a lot of that summer staffing that we were going to hire weren't hired. So I'm not really sure how you do that. You know, one thing I've learned about this, I think that we will use this in the future to do listening posts or opportunities for the entire county to get involved. Occasionally, maybe we do a meeting a month, a business meeting a month doing this. Might be a good idea. That way, everybody has an opportunity to call in. So the board, I have some comments. The board has taken meetings virtually. Commissioners regularly hold weekly business meetings on Thursday at 10:00 via Zoom, ensuring public comment via Zoom, phone, and email. The board has started a series of listing posts that Commissioners can hear directly from residents and customers about community concerns involving the ongoing pandemic effect on given topic. Two listing posts were held last week, local business and economic development and sheltering concerns. Each were well attended by the public. This week, we'll be holding sessions for a county overall COVID-19 response, which we already did on Tuesday, and the intergovernmental response to COVID-19, which I believe we're doing today at 2:00. So log on and participate. I just wanted to, you know, I hope that folks realize the importance of local government. You know, we've done a lot to hold debate thanks to the advice of Dr. President and as well as Nancy and Gary and our, our legal counsel. And we've done a lot, so I want to just give you a really brief history. On February 28th, Clackamas County EOC was activated. On March 1st, we urged the public to obtain ongoing information about the pandemic. On March 2nd, Clackamas County declared a state emergency, the first Oregon county to do so. On March 17th, Clackamas County closed public access to most of our county buildings to ensure that employees and the community were safe. On March 18th, Clackamas County, Multnomah and Washington County sent a letter to the governor asking her to announce a moratorium. On March 23rd, after state, after Oregon's Stay Home, Stay Safe campaign was initiated, the county required virtually all employees to telecommute. On March 24th, Commissioners prohibited price gouging for goods and services. Martha, you need to mute your mic. That's okay. Gouging, let me see, price gouging goods and services and prohibited discrimination by lodgers against homeless, low-income people and housing vouchers, when we provide housing vouchers. And Clackamas County's Public Health Officer, Sarah Present, has been involved with regional coordination and public health response since the beginning of this pandemic. One of her most recent updates was to join in a public health officers of both Multnomah and Washington Counties to relay and explain the CDC's recommendation to wear cloth face masks. Also, just wanted to mention one other organization that I'm the chair of. And frankly, I, I haven't been involved in this organization that long. But I thought it was all about earthquakes. The Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization actually is coordinating with all the medical facilities and the county's all our emergency management organizations and distributing information. So my job as chair this, in this year, I think I've been chair for two years, is to make sure that, that the public knows about the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization. It is a great organization. We're doing weekly calls, updates. And we hear from all the doctors and hospital organizations about the challenges they face. So with that, stay home, stay safe. And thank you very much. And we are adjourned.